It is now six o'clock.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Sacks?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the meeting of April 12th, 2021. Could I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Are there any clarifications or corrections? I did have one correction. It's on page two of five of the minutes, the first complete paragraph, and that is, should read, Mayor Marlin said due to ongoing litigation, she and the council were advised not to comment on alleged violations of Open Meeting Act during specific meetings last November because they're the subject of the lawsuit. But any other concerns obviously could be addressed. So I'd like the minutes to reflect that. Thank you. Um, next item, oh, so we need, yes.
We need to vote.
I know. Let's notice that. So, uh, could the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, we're calling the roll with the minutes corrected as the mayor has stated, correct? Okay.
Right, that's right.
All right, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Bill Brown is here, too.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, and that's it, I think. I don't see Mr. Miller.
Was Bill Colebrook muted? Or did he respond?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, great. Okay, that motion passes. All right, next item on the agenda is continuation of our income, our new council member training session, and tonight we will be hearing from the Urbana Police Department and the Urbana Fire Department. So we'll begin with the Urbana Police Department. And presenting for the department are Chief Seraphin and Deputy Chief Rich Searls.
Good evening, council members and future council members. As I was thinking a little bit about this as we're getting prepared, I thought, well, most people know what the police department does. But tonight we'll hopefully give you a little bit, sort of the general layout. So for those who don't know me, my name is Bryant Seraphin. I'm in my 27th year here at the police department, and I have been in a variety of different capacities, both in patrol, a lot of time in the investigations division, and then here toward the end of the career, as one does, spend some time in administration. So tonight, we're gonna walk through, we don't have tons of slides to bore you with, but we do have about a dozen that I think will maybe help to illustrate a few points. And hopefully, this will, this will be meaningful as we move through. So if I can successfully share a screen, I'm going to attempt to do so. Sure. So I hope everyone can see this lovely shade of orange. And we're gonna, we'll go ahead and go through some of our, we're gonna go over, I guess quickly, some of the divisions that we do have here. So very, very simply, there's, this is an organization chart. So at the, at the very top is our administration. Of course, we respond to the council and to the, to the mayor. The department technically has three divisions that actually get all of the work done. You will see the patrol division here, and it is, it's the first one as we go from left to right because it's the backbone. Those are the, the officers who respond to all of the calls for service. As you can see, we have the criminal investigations division and, and then our services division. So we have three main divisions that serve under administration that take direction, and we all report to, of course, the mayor and the council. Our current staffing as allotted is, is, is on the screen now. We do not have all of these positions filled right now. But we do have 59 sworn officers and 14 civilians. You will see them sort of scattered throughout the slides as, as we move through them to kind of give you a sense of where, where, where the staffing is at. But if every position was filled, these would be the numbers. Administration, this is, we will be the people that you see most often, council people. You will see the chief, you will see the deputy chief. We will have others that, that you'll get a chance to see and interact with at meetings and whatnot, but predominantly, those duties fall to the, the chief of police and the deputy chief of police. We do have an assistant that helps keep our operation moving, and that, that this is the smallest of all the divisions that we have. So this is our patrol division. Again, like I said earlier, it is the biggest of, of the, of the three. It is the division that normally starts all of our police calls for service. So on Christmas, on New Year's, these are the officers, these are the people who, who are working. We did, we wanted to do a super deep dive, but we did want to give you a sense of how many calls for service we actually have, and I was digging back through some stats, and we actually in 2013, I think, had 32,000 calls for service that year. Generally speaking, we're in the 25,000 to 30,000 calls for service per year, generating somewhere the neighborhood of 6,000 to 8,000 police reports. Because of the span of control within this patrol division, we have two lieutenants who oversee this, this area of the department. There are 10 sergeants who work there, and then there, ideally, we would like to have 28 patrol officers. That's sort of the quick layout of the manning of this. If you didn't know, the police department, back in December of 1998, went away from a traditional eight-hour shift. So at that time, we had officers would work generally eight hours at a time, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and then 11:00 PM, the midnight or the graveyard shift from 11:00 PM until 7:00 in the morning. That, in, in an attempt to maybe alter our working environment, and that was, that was a piece of it, I was a very young patrolman at the time, we went to a 12-hour shift plan. And so in the 12-hour plan, the, the dynamic of the officers working is simply half of that department is working within the patrol division, and the other half is off, and they work, do it two days, and then they go home. So we have a blue team and a gold team. And while the blue team is on, the gold team is off for two days, and then they switch, and there's a certain pattern essentially of two on and two off, and then three on and two off, and there's, gets us to 80 hours in a two-week pay period. But that is something that has been absolutely beneficial for us as a department. As a matter of fact, we were one of the first ones around who tried this. And where the pattern works out is the officers do get, they have to work a three-day weekend, but the following weekend is they're off for three days. And that is something that, that is, that's valuable to the employees, to their, their human resources. I did get a chance to see the human resources and slides, or excuse me, I guess, presentation last week, and I think that's important to note that that's something that we, that our employees do, do enjoy and is, is helpful for their personal lives. So just thought we should mention that again, our guys work 12-hour shifts. The investigations division investigates, of course, the more serial, the more violent crime, the things that take more time, a lot of death investigations and those types of things. That division is run by one lieutenant, but he has, as you can see, quite a few different areas of expertise that, that report to him. All of our property and evidence is under the investigations division. And so if someone were to turn in lost property, if someone were to the, the, look for something lost and found, it, it follows its way ultimately to the investigations division through the evidence custodian. We have a, an assistant, an administrative assistant there, and of course, we do have two detectives who are assigned to the, the street crimes task force. That was a task force that was created back in 2015 by the chiefs at the time, who wanted to try to, try to assist and deal with the, the enforced, the investigative enforcement side with some of the gun issues that were happening in there. Their work is, is, is ongoing, is, is ongoing now. So those would be the total staff that work with the investor, that work in the investigations division. And finally, our third division is the services division. Currently, that is headed up by Lieutenant Matt Payne, and this essentially is a civilian support of all the department activities. I'm gonna jump to that big number in the middle, the six police service representatives. Those are the people who answer the phone here when you call the non-emergency number. They route all of the concerns into the department and then try to, and then have to do the initial triage, and sometimes they transfer that call to dispatch. One common thing that sometimes comes up is the idea of a dispatching and then 911 calls. We do not dispatch our own calls. Champaign County uses a multi-agency approach when it comes to dispatching, and so all of the dispatchers work out in a, building out on East Main Street, and so if someone dials 911, it does not come to the Urbana Police Department. It goes out to Metcalf, and then it's dispatched. We do have the civilian personnel who are here for a, most of the day, we don't, we are not the civilian staff, we are not 24/7 operation. There are some overhours late about midnight to 6:00 AM. If you were to call the non-emergency number, it will actually ring out to the dispatch center, and then they can coordinate. We do have police here, as I've said, 24/7, but we don't necessarily have civilian staff here. We have a, we have one animal control officer who's here, and, and then, as many of the council members know, the crime analyst is, is nested there in the services division. And so when Melissa Hendryan, many of you have met and dealt with, this is the division within which she resides. And so we, we do some work with regards to the, the council, and some of those concerns come up through her, this is where she's at. The other thing that I wanted to point out, just like I said at the beginning of a call for service, the 911 call taking is not done here. We also don't have a jail. We do not operate a jail facility. So if we take someone to temporary custody and take them to the county jail, that is under the umbrella of the sheriff. We do not have any sort of jail. We do not run the Urbana Police Department, does not run a jail. So sometimes there gets to be some confusion. People might call us and say, hey, my so-and-so was arrested, can you tell me about where they're at? And we were after, we refer those, those matters to the jail. I'm gonna, before I move on to the next, I will quickly ask the deputy chief, Rich Searls, if I've missed anything that you think needs to be said here as we move through these, at least these early slides.
No, I don't believe so. Thank you.
So I do see a hand up, I guess, here if, if we wanna take a question now. James Quisenberry?
Yeah, if it's okay to take a question, I've got one. So when you talked about the two groups, the blue and the gold, is the, are the sergeants and the patrol officers theoretically split evenly between the blue and the gold? So you have five sergeants in each?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that's exactly right.
In the services group, you listed a lieutenant at the top of that, but it didn't include a lieutenant in the head count. Is that one of the lieutenants from the other areas?
So there should be, there, there are four lieutenants total at the, at the agency.
Okay.
One investigations, two in patrol, just because of the size of the division, and then one in, in services.
Okay. And you said that the civilian employees, I assume most of those are in the services area?
Yes, there are a couple of assistants in the other divisions, but most of the civilians are in the services.
Okay, and for, well, I assume, how does the, how does this call, the non-emergency call for services number, how is that staffed? I mean, six people, 24/7, doesn't, doesn't quite?
Sure. So, so what happens with the, if someone were to call the non-emergency number and say, there's a, there's a fight in progress in the middle of the street. The, 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 the police service representative, the PSR, would immediately forward that call out to the dispatcher.
But are they, are they always there? Is there always one of those on duty?
There's, there's always, there's always, dispatchers are 24/7, yes.
Okay.
Now, our police service representatives are not. So if you called the non-emergency number at 2:00 in the morning to say there's a fight in the street, it would transfer automatically out to the dispatcher.
All right, and, and my last question for now, sorry. The, in the, in the criminal investigation division, are most of those, are those 12-hour jobs or those mostly eight-hour a day?
That's a, that's a good question. Those are a lot of those, not all of them. Most of the detective, the detectives all work 4:10s. They work a 4:10 hour shift. So some of them work Monday through Thursday, others work Tuesday through, through Friday, and their general hours are 7:30 in the morning until 5:30 in the, in the evening. And detectives, of course, also then are part of an on-call rotation. So when events happen after hours, at 2:00 in the morning, New Year's Eve, et cetera, the detectives are subject to more routine call-outs depending on the severity of the issue.
Okay, I lied. I have one more question, and that is, are the detectives part of the represented staff?
If represented, you mean the fraternal order police? Yes.
Okay.
So, so yeah, so all of the sergeants, and then the patrol officers and the detectives. So our detectives is, is a lateral appointment. It's not necessarily a, a, a rank advancement. So officers and detectives are the same rank, if you will. It's simply linear. And then the sergeant, so sergeants and the line officers are within the FOP line 70, and then the, the management, the administration, issues with the management with regards to lieutenants, chief and deputy chief are not.
All right, thank you.
Typically, one of the things, the typical things that we're asked, that we bring before council, obviously, budget, I know that was discussed last week. Not to any great detail, but at least that was one of the items that we, we wanted to bring. Input on changes to city ordinances. So when, as there have been ordinances that have been passed and then repealed and whatnot, we will be a part of those discussions. Grant funding, when we have grant opportunities, we will, those are another things that we, as the police department, will, will, will bring forward. Occasionally, we'll have memorandums of understanding, intergovernmental agreements. So one of the ones that was passed within the last several months was a police records management system, and that's been something that's been a long time coming and whatnot. So we were grateful that the, the council sought fit to help us move that forward. And then we, other newer programs, when we instituted body worn cameras back in, I believe it was January of 2019, that was another item that we brought to council for education and information, and then occasionally we'll have other things that might rise up that, that the council would like to know about. And so whether that's sometimes a recent shootings or some other criminal events, we will try to make sure that everybody's informed, and so we will bring those items to the council. The city of Urbana's boards and commissions, the department, the, excuse me, the police department is affiliated with, with, with a few of them. Obviously, the civilian police review board, it's not necessarily our department, if you will, but we obviously have to work closely and, and collaborate with those folks. The traffic commission is another one, and then, and then I think, I think they mentioned this too last week, the police pension board is another board that we are, that we are affiliated, affiliated with. Other city departments, I think, take a lot of the leads on these things, but we are clearly vested in, in these, and these were a few examples of some of the boards and commissions that the police department works with. Funding for the police department, most of ours comes through the general fund, and there'll probably be some more coming up as we go deeper dive into the budget process coming up here next month. But there are also other areas where the, the police department does have some fiscal income. The, but clearly, far and away, the, the general fund is, is, is the, the big piece of the pie. There are federal state asset forfeiture processes that we do partake in. The DUI fund will be something that you might hear, funds that are associated with the DUI and convictions, and we have those set aside for certain purposes. Cannabis fund, and matter of fact, some of our funding comes in from the school district regarding the, the SROs. So these are the big areas of funding that the, the police department has access to. There was, there's been a lot of discussion regarding the comprehensive plan, and for me, traditionally, the comprehensive plan seemed to be, well, where is the city gonna, geography-wise, gonna move and exist, and are we gonna build a new building somewhere? But I think what's interesting for us is, is, is we try to think about some of these public safety issues holistically and to the safety citywide, and how do people feel about certain things? So, and so we've tried to take some of what we hear at the council and inject that into our work, whether it's at our traffic stop pilot program that we started in January of this year, whether it's our adoption of the Ten Shared Principles from the Illinois Association of Chiefs and the police and the N double A C P. Whether those are things that we look to in maybe in the more traditional sense of a comprehensive plan, for instance, physical environmental changes, so whether it's street lighting, or whether it's traffic intersection, construction, and some of the, the physical things that, that, that can be do, that we do. So we wanted to at least mention some of that, and we'll go a, a little bit deeper into the next slide when we talk how we work together, some of the other departments, but you know, whether, and then, of course, for us, any comprehensive plan has to involve community involvement for us, whether it's, you know, neighborhood watch and volunteer efforts. A lot of ways that we try to do certain things, and this wasn't necessarily a, a list of everything that we do, but just to kind of give a sense to how is, how the police department sort of fits into some of the, some of the comprehensive plans and some of those goals and strategies. I thought we talked, and one of the, one of the other things here that we were having some discussion on was how the, the joint city efforts, and how do we sort of work together with, with all the other departments? And I was thinking about something, if it's as simple as like you look at the fire department there, sometimes we help the fire department to something simply is directing traffic, so people aren't driving over the fire hoses. Sometimes it's rather involved and complex, working in arson investigation that we work with, with the fire department. Public Works Department, we do lots with them. Lots of planning for special events, lots of barricades, lots of safety concerns in, in that particular area, and then, of course, emergency issues. So when that tornado or some event happens, we have the relationships and we have the ability to work with public works and those issues. Community development is one, there's, I've spent more time here, we've, I've learned more about and spent more time in. We have a design review team here at the city that, that is led by public works and community development, but place and fire also on the design review team. Sometimes there are certain things, something simple that design review team has done, like addressing, where somebody might put forth, hey, the numbers we think should be here, and then police and fire might go, yeah, but that's not how the rest of them work, and here's some feedback. Sometimes the design review team works on things like, I, I had no idea that, well, what's the radius for a fire truck to turn around somewhere? All of those kinds of efforts, and we're a part of that. The police department also works and helps with the problem properties, so that we can try to work with landlords, landlords to take care of things at a lower level, to make sure that we can address some of the concerns and try to work with landlords when we have some issues, and sometimes it involves enforcement, and sometimes hopefully it's conversations, and it's education, and it's collaboration. Finally, even the executive department, when we, you know, obviously with the mayor's office and policy direction and those kinds of things, but I wanted to put information technology, because I will tell you, there's no way body cameras work at the city without IT support, without IT folks helping us try to make the decisions that need to be made, and understand the costs, and understand how to do things safely and effectively from a cybersecurity standpoint. We spend a lot of time with information technology folks in working together side by side. So I, I think that is the majority of the, the slides that I wanted to say. I figured there might, wanted to present, I figured there might be some questions, and hopefully Rich and I can do our best to answer a few of those and still leave a little time for our fire department brothers to take over coming up here next.
We can take a few questions at this point, if you have any. Bill Colebrook?
Chief, how many openings, vacancies do you have, whether it's police or civilian?
Right now, I believe there's one open, the two open civilians and three open officer slots.
Thank you.
Bill Brown, and then Dennis?
Yeah, thanks, chief. I'm looking forward to sometime seeing what you guys put together as far as a comprehensive annual report goes. I know I've talked about that before, and hopefully we'll see something over the next year at some point. I think it's important to be able to have it, address what training's been accomplished and what kind of progress we've made toward other goals in the police department, as well as like calls for service and all that stuff, have it required every year in one place would be nice. I, I've enjoyed doing a couple of ride-alongs, and I, I know, I'm pretty sure that's been suspended temporarily. Are you guys doing ride-alongs again?
So with regards to certain staff, like the, the council, yes, we would, we can, we can, we can work with the ride-alongs now for that. We, we did last year when the, when the pandemic hit, did really ratchet down on those things.
Okay, yeah, I would definitely recommend that for anybody who wants to. My question on the asset forfeiture fund, cannabis fund, and the DUI fund, are any or all of those related to how much we as a department take in, or are those distributed on some, on a more formulaic basis?
So there is a, there, there is a formula that we do. So if we take something in on the, the state, the asset forfeiture, and Councilman Colebrook could probably do a better lecture than I could on, on that, but there is a specific formula, and percentage goes to the state police because they oversee the program, and we have to file reports every year, and then there's the, the, the department itself, and then there's the, the state's attorney's office who handles some of the, the legal obligations, all of those, and there's certain And there's certain percentages. And then if you're in a joint, a multi-agency unit like the street crimes task force, then, then it's further sort of dwindled than this paper kind of different percentages and shares. So it's, there's, there's usually a little more math in it than, than one might think.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis.
Yeah, chief, could you mention briefly and kind of go over the police department's responsibilities and obligations concerning the school resource officers?
So the, so currently the officers are assigned to, one to the high school, one to the middle school. And as a matter of fact, a year ago, when we finally got that particular program launched, within a couple of weeks, the pandemic hit and shut things down. And they had to do, try to figure out different ways to plug in. And so they worked at food drop offs and they were part of teams that went out and tried to touch base for students who weren't engaged in the Zoom or the, the online events. The, the school resource officers are simply, at this point, and we're hoping that as the schools this fall, I would suppose, come back to more normal school day. The, the school resource officers are about being counselors and teachers and doing those types of things as opposed to enforcement. They are, that is a hat that they wear, but are the roles and responsibilities are not to arrest students. The roles and responsibilities are to provide guidance, expertise and a way to work with and collaborate with the schools as they try to deal with issues and behavioral crises that show up.
And I understand that these, the officers or their salaries are covered by the school district, I think. What is responsibility financially for the city?
So when we, when we started this particular program, and again, it was, I guess, a year ago, when we started that, the city's responsibility was the initial outlay of equipment. The cars, the computers within the cars. And those were probably the two, the two of the biggest pieces of equipment. There were some other equipment as well. And, and so one of the things, and so that was our, our big financial input. I will tell you then, and I don't recall at the top of my head, halfway through the school year, we did leave one of our officer openings, our vacancies that I spoke of to Bill Colbrook a minute ago, open so that we could help the, the city could help this, the school district offset some of their, the costs of this program because of the pandemic and because of the, we understood the expense and we wanted to be sensitive to that. So, and I don't have that exact number in front of me, but there is a financial offset to the school district.
The cost of the equipment and cars, is that recurring or is that a one time shot? And now we have the cars, so we don't have to concern ourselves except for with maintenance?
So the equipment expenses, there's life of equipment and it has been stretched out amateurized, maybe is the right word. I'm looking forward to try to, to try to say so that when the car is set to be replaced in eight years, that money has been set aside and that's been rolled into the cost of the SROs. So when you hear a lot of people talk about the SROs and what the cost is, well, that cost is also one eighth of a police car has been, is set aside and is part of that funding formula.
Thank you then.
We have time for a couple more questions. Jay.
I actually have a couple of follow up questions. One, I was hoping you could go back and answer Bill Brown's question about the cannabis funds. Cause I think that gets kind of skipped over. And then also, will it be possible for you to send like a job description for the SROs to new council members? Cause you, you mentioned that they're more of like counselors. I'd like to know more about the qualifications and what the expectations are for those roles.
So, yeah, I mean, and there's a, and probably the easiest way probably is with regards to the SROs is to find the I G A and get that out to you. I think that might be very, very helpful. And, and this is where I might see if deputy chief Searls wants to talk for a moment on, because I do not know that I'm going to be the best guy to talk about the cannabis fund. I know there, how, how some of that was related, because there's two different sources of that. And I don't see Elizabeth Henan on, because I think she's actually off. So I know, Rich, if you want to do a better job of, of explaining, because otherwise I'll have to get back with you on that.
Yeah, I can try. So the state of Illinois has elected a tax on cannabis sales. And a portion of those sales and that tax is directly given to municipalities for there, there's a very narrow window which can be used. And it's specifically for the enforcement of black market cannabis sales. So that's the, that's the window where we can spend that money. Otherwise, the monies go for restorative practices within communities and things like that. But, but the slice that the police department gets is directly related per the legislation for those black market sales.
Okay, I think in the interest of time, we'll move on to the police department. One thing I think it's important for folks to know is that, well, as, as mayor, I also serve on the Metcalf Policy Board and I learned a lot about the administration of the dispatch system. And it, the city of Urbana, along with the other participating agencies are charged for the dispatch service based on the number of calls for service. And this past year, they use the 25,000 number, approximately 25,000 as the basis. So we pay close to $800,000 a year to Metcalf for the dispatch service. So that when people call 911, somebody is always answering the phone. But that's also part of the police department budget. Okay, well, thank you, chief and deputy chief. And we'll move on to the fire department and chief loss. And is anyone joining, else joining you, chief?
Yes, deputy chief Dave should be on here shortly.
Okay.
He should be coming, come in. He did have to travel on to home, but he should be on here shortly as well. So, good evening, mayor, council. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to share a little bit about the Urbana Fire Department with you. I'm going to share my screen here. Just going to do it right here. Is that not the right one? Doesn't look like the right one, apologize here. That's what I get for having too many screens up. I apologize, I did practice this earlier. I'm going to get it, I promise. There we go. Okay, can you see it? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize for that. So again, I'd like to share a little bit about the Urbana Fire Department. My name's Chuck Los. I am the fire chief here for the Urbana Fire Department. I've actually been with the city of Urbana now for a little over 31 months. I've spent 34 years in the fire service, came here from the city of Peoria. So I've been in, in the fire service for, again, 34 months. My deputy chief, who we just appointed, Demond Dave, will be on here shortly as well. Chief Dave came to us from Quincy, has been in the fire service for 21 years. And together, we're looking forward to, to really moving forward and serving our community together with our firefighters and doing some really good stuff here in the, in the future. Getting started here. Urbana Fire Department is ISO class one rated fire service. So the ISO rating is a one to 10, one being the very best rating that you can get from the ISO. We receive that rating because of our training, because of the Illinois American Water System and because of our communication systems. All of those things working together, it gives us a rating of, again, the best in the state. So we're very, very proud of that. We have been recognized by the, the state fire marshal's office as well for that. So again, that, that is something we're very proud of. We're 59 firefighters and administrative personnel here. We have 58 sworn firefighters on the department and one administrative assistant on the department as well. Some of the things that we provide are fire suppression, fire prevention. We provide an E M T intermediate level. The intermediate level is, is right in the middle of, of what the state recognizes as the, the, the levels of providing emergency medical service in the community. It starts out as a basic, then goes to an intermediate level and then paramedic. In our department, we have 18 paramedics, 18 intermediates and 23 basic level E M T providers that, that respond to, to calls each and every day. We're a member of MABUS Division 28 of Technical Rescue Response Team. We are the technical response, technical rescue response team for the county. So if the county deploys a team in our county, we're the ones that would, would get deployed, whether it is intrastate or whether it is interstate. We have been deployed to Louisiana for Katrina and for Gustav hurricanes. We've been, we've responded in internally into the state as well for different emergencies that, that have happened within the state. And I'll go through a little bit about what that technical rescue response team looks like as well. We are hazardous materials operations response team as well. So every member of our department is at minimum hazard material operations level. That means that they can go out and identify and mitigate any type of hazardous material, excuse me, that we would have. We have technicians, which is the highest level of, of response on our department as well. Those are the ones that are going to do the research, they're going to be the ones that, that help to identify the proper protective clothing to wear, the proper mitigation that we need to do. And then the operation level is who goes in and takes care of that mitigation of that hazardous material to, so it doesn't go any farther. We have 18 fully trained fire investigators and we also have a couple of arson investigators. The arson investigators are a little bit different because they go to P T I to do the, the interviews and to, and they're, they are able to, to go a little bit further into the investigation process. And then again, we're working together with all of the other city departments collaboratively to give the best services that we, that we can to, to our community. Comprehensive planning, just like chief Seraphin said, we're, we're trying to work together with, within the city, departments working together to, to provide the best services that we can for our community. Some of the things that we're doing that are providing some of those, those services, working together with some of these, some of our, our internal stakeholders are completing the home fire life safety program. It's what we call the H F L S program, H F L S. And it's going door to door and knocking on doors and checking smoke detectors, checking CO detectors, going through a home if we're invited in to do a, a fire and life safety walkthrough so that we can provide our, our, our community the, the best opportunity for helping them out with some life safety. The prevention bureau is working with community development on a regular basis, on building plans, on, on working together collaboratively there to assure compliance from the start of the project. The one thing we don't want to do is get this project in motion and then have to go back and tell people that they have to tear things out. It, it's not a good look for us. It's not good services for us as the city. So we try to get that on the very start, on the very front end and work together to, to help that, that work. We work with public works to determine the placement, replacement plan for our fire stations. Station number two and station number three, both been identified in the, the master facilities plan as needing to be replaced and very, very soon. So we're working with public works to determine what those locations look like, what those buildings are going to look like. And, and, and again, to put those buildings in place so that they'll be a 50 plus year building, something that, that we're not going to have to look at for the next 10, 20, 30, 40 years. But something that's going to last and be able to serve that, 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 that neighborhood and the community for the next many, many years. Collectively working together helps to determine the best response times and the services that we're going to provide to the community for years and years to come. We work with our, our, our brothers and sisters at, at the police department to help provide the best services. Again, when we have an emergency, working together creates the safest work environment for those that are around us, the, the community members that, that need to pass through there, whether it's traffic wise. But again, to, to follow up so that we can give them the very best on the back end of, of an emergency scene. We go when people are having their worst days and we try to make it a little bit better. Little bit about what we do. Again, much like the police department, we have different divisions that we have, our different services that we provide within our fire department, within your fire department. The fire prevention bureau, we provide, again, those inspection processes. But we do a lot of inspections through, for businesses throughout the year as well. And I'll, I'll talk about that here a little bit pretty soon. Fire suppression and operations as, as we, we kind of jokingly or simply put it sometimes, it's putting the wet stuff on the hot stuff. That is the suppression efforts that we, that we do. Special operations, there are a lot of different things in that special operations. And again, I'll talk about that here pretty soon. I have a slide dedicated to that. Our training bureau is, again, something that we're really shoring up here. One of the things that we have done well is our, our, our rank and file. Our, our, our officers down train regularly on the basics of what they need to do when they go out on, on emergency calls. We have committed moving forward that we're going to put leadership training together. That we're going to start creating a succession plan to help build our internal firefighters so that they can be a part of a strong leadership process and be a part of a, a strong community as well. And then our administration, again, the support for what our operations does every day. A little bit about our org chart here, kind of gives a little bit of the flow. We have one fire chief, one deputy chief, one administrative assistant. We have a prevention and education officer at the University of Illinois, our campus prevention officer. And then our fire marshal position right now is a vacant position. The division chiefs on down in this flow chart are 24, 48 is, is what their hours that they work. So they're on 24 hours, they're off for 48 hours. What that equals out to is about a 52.7 hour work week. So that, that platoon is, is, is a traditionally has worked in the fire So that platoon traditionally has worked in the fire service to get the best coverage with the least amount of people to get that coverage, and gives us a staffing that we need to have to be able to staff every piece of apparatus in the city and give the coverage that the city needs. Our Fire Prevention Bureau, talked a little bit about that. The bureau itself does about 370 fire prevention permits. Our fire prevention permits are generally businesses. Those businesses, we go out to and do a very thorough fire prevention permit, and they come, again, the businesses pay the city to have those permits done, those inspections done, so that they can get their permits for occupancy. Our liquor license occupancy inspections, again, 75 of those, that we go out and do those, when those liquor permits come up, we go out and make sure that the fire safety is in place for those as well. We do hazardous materials occupancy inspections. Those hazardous material occupancy inspections basically look at the amount of hazardous materials in a facility, and then we determine what kind of permit that they're going to get, whether it's a hazardous material permit or whether it's a fire prevention permit. Again, that level determines what we're going to give them as a permit. The other thing this does for us is it gives us a little bit of insight of what those buildings look like. When we're responding to those things at 2:00 in the morning, it's really, really good for us to have an idea of what those buildings look like at 2:00 in the afternoon so that we can see what we're responding into. Public school inspections, we just did, we have a fire marshal right now that is basically working on his days off. He comes in, his two days off, and he comes in and does a lot of these inspections right now. But the public school inspections, he just completed those, and we worked with the school systems to help better their safety for the students when they get back in session. The general commercial business inspections, 693 of those, those we involve our companies with, our engine companies and our truck companies. We involve those in those inspections because of the time it takes. One person couldn't get those done, this entirety of what the bureau has to do. Multifamily inspections are biannually. University of Illinois building inspections, we have 474 of those. Again, our engine company on campus helps with those inspections, but our fire prevention officer is the one that coordinates all of that stuff. Total inspections, we have about 2,164 inspections that we run through the bureau to make sure that we're staying in compliance. Suppression and operations, fire suppression activities, again, going out when we catch a fire, they respond out to those fires and take care of business. I will say, again, 34 years in the business, this is a wonderful fire department. Aggressive when they need to be aggressive, but yet smart enough when they see that the conditions have gone too far, we get those things taken care of under wraps and safe before we make entry into those buildings. But those suppression activities are, again, at the foundation of what we do. Emergency medical emergencies take in a wide array of things that we do. 51% of our calls are EMS calls. So it's a little lower than what the national average is, but it's only because we do so many other things. It's not that we run fewer EMS calls, it's just we run so many other diverse calls that it adds up to our call number. The good intent and service calls, again, can be, and I wrote some of these down so that I can tell you what some of those are. Some of those are a person in distress. They're just not, they just can't help themselves. Lockouts, if somebody has locked themselves out of a house or a car, especially in a hot day and there's a child or an animal inside, we show up to help with those lockouts. An elevator lockout as well. If an elevator is stuck between floors, we show up to help mitigate that. Ring or jewelry removal, we have done several of those. We have some special tools now that we can take care of that ring and jewelry removal. Water problems, if somebody, and I know I'm not going to go into all of these, but if somebody has a water pipe that breaks, we'll get a call for that. You know, we have some wet vacs, we have squeegees, we can go out and help. A lot of times what we will do is take the toilet off of the base and squeegee most of that water, as much as we can, into that sewer drain so that we can, again, keep the damage to a minimum. And then rescue calls as well. Rescue calls are different than EMS calls, again, because of the different tools that we use, people that are in trapped. We had a young man at a local industry that had some steel fall on him, and, you know, it took some special technical rescue tools to be able to get that steel off of, it was about 10,000 pounds of steel. So it took special tools to get that off. Some of our call numbers, fire calls, 199, those are structured fires of some kind or fires that we respond to as it's called in that we have a fire. Most of our fires, again, I'm bragging a bit, but I feel like they're worth the bragging about. Our firefighters generally keep the fires to rooming contents because they're aggressive to be able to get in and get things taken care of. EMS and rescue and high-pressure calls, the pressure ruptures, things like that, about 2,864 calls. Service calls, 656, hazardous materials, and you can read the numbers. We run about 5,150 calls a year, and that is any of the mix of what you see there. If it's a fire call, every apparatus in the city responds to that, including the fire chief. So if we have a, I don't want to be kept out of those kind of things, you know, it's what we do. So it's, we all run on those calls. If we have a second call, we have mutual aid agreements with Champaign. If we can't break an engine loose, then Champaign will come and help us. Likewise, if they have a big call and they need us, we go out and help them as well. Our special operations, I talked about special operations a bit. We're a member of MABUS Division 28. That's basically Champaign County. MABUS Division 28 is several different departments that come together to provide these services, but the technical rescue team is Urbana. We have the tools, we have the training, so we provide the services for technical rescue training. That includes high and low rope rescue, and that means dangling off of buildings, rappelling off of buildings, means going down into steep ditches, anything that would entail being tied onto a rope, that is your high and low angle rope rescue. Trench rescue, again, is one of those things that we have, I hate to say, but most of our trench rescues are more recovery than rescues, because when those trenches cave in, the weight of the dirt is so heavy that it's a crushing, crushing kind of call. But we go out and we do those rescues and recoveries there. Confined space rescue, and that is getting into little bitty spaces, and I do mean little bitty spaces. They are, if you're claustrophobic at all, these are the kind of areas that make you have bad dreams at night, because our firefighters get into these, the small culverts to rescue animals, to rescue people. So we did, in a confined space, have responded to the county for grain bin rescues, where people have gotten into grain bins and been pulled down into the grain, and then we go in and help to evacuate some of that grain around them so we can get them out safely. Structural collapse rescue, we see this a lot with hurricanes and tornadoes, but this is a lot of times where you're going to see that structural collapse. Heavy machinery and technical rescue, again, farm equipment, things like that, and water rescue is another thing. We've had some water rescue events. I will say that our firefighters train hard on this stuff and a lot of hours to make sure that they're ready for that low frequency and the high-risk events. You may not see it often, but the risk is really high, so we have to really train a lot for those. The Training Bureau, we do a lot of different things in the bureau, with EMS, fire suppression, special ops, our leadership training, again, something that we put together. I want to give credit to our people for putting together a FTO, Field Training Officer Program, where they're really taking care of those that are newly hired and newly promoted. And then our documentation through our software for the ISO rating. We got it, we just want to keep it, because it is very, 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 very good to be a Class 1, so we want to maintain that, so we try to document that as much as possible. Our administration, told you a little bit about that earlier. Our job's pretty easy, provide leadership and support. We just need to find out what the needs of the department is to make sure that we can provide the best services to our community. So from the administrative side, it's just identifying those needs and then, basically, making sure that those needs are pushed up to plan for those. Where we are, a little bit about our stations. We're at 400 South Vine Street, where the city hall, or the city building is, Phila Road, Lincoln Avenue, and Gregory Street. Our central station here at the city building is built and occupied in 1964. Out of this building responds our battalion chief, or our division chief, is what we currently call them, out of Car 220. That is our command staff. They are in charge of that shift, that battalion, for the day. We respond out with a 100-foot tower, which is our ladder 260, or our tower's 261, with a captain, an engineer, and a firefighter. We have Engine 251, responds out with a lieutenant, an engineer, and a firefighter, and in this building also is our administration offices. So we have our chief, deputy chief, and administrative assistant in this building. Station number two, built and occupied in the late 1960, it looks like 69, yes, 1969. This building has Engine 252, which has lieutenant, engineer, and firefighter, and this station has been one that has been identified to be replaced in the facility master plan. It's a small, two-bay station, very cramped, and it really is starting to deteriorate quite quickly. And again, it's been identified in the master plan as one to be replaced very soon. Station number three, 1407 North Lincoln, built in late 1970, estimated about that date. Engine 253 responds out of there, and it's a lieutenant, engineer, and firefighter. And again, this is the other station that has been identified by the facility's master plan to be replaced. Again, a small, two-bay fire station, small living quarters that just really has been deteriorating quickly. Both of these stations, we're looking at, again, like I said earlier, we're looking at that 50-year plan. We're not looking at putting up something that's going to go into last 10, 15 years for the city, and then we're going to have to go through all of this again. We're looking at something that is going to be long-term, that we are not going to have to look at this for ever again, because we'll take care of those needs. Our university station, 1105 West Gregory, this one is built at the University of Illinois. Department was merged with Urbana Fire and Champaign Fire. So in 1998, the University of Illinois Fire Department decided that they were going to merge into Urbana Fire and Champaign Fire. Urbana Fire took six of the firefighters, Champaign took two, and this station was built on West Gregory just shortly after that, in late 2000, mid to late 2001. Out of this responds 254 with a lieutenant, engineer, and firefighter, and also Car 212, which is the University of Illinois Prevention Officer. This is our newest station. It is fully maintained and taken care of by University of Illinois. That is your, in a very quick presentation, your Urbana Fire Department. Do I have any questions?
Awesome. Oh, I'm sorry.
Bill Colbrook.
Yeah, thanks, Chief, I appreciate the presentation. I was just curious about the replacement plan for the equipment, the fire trucks. I happen to know that, you know, the fire suppression equipment, you know, an engine or a ladder, they're pretty expensive these days, and it's a pretty big hit to municipality to pay for an engine or especially pay for a ladder truck. I know our ladder truck is fairly new, but, you know, these things do age over time. I just was curious about when the next piece of equipment needs to be replaced and what is your process for allocating funds on a yearly basis in order to pay for such a big purchase?
Yes, thank you for that. So we, much like Chief Seraphin mentioned, we amortize all the equipment, the big equipment that we purchase. So a million-dollar, million-a-quarter, to be exact, 100-foot ladder tower is going to be amortized over about, between 15 to 20 years. Over that time, you know, we're going to maintain it, we're going to take care of it, and hopefully, after that point of that 15 to 18 years, we're trying to set that at 15 years. One of the things that we try to do in the fire service is have a reserve fleet that is as good as your frontline, so that when you have to take something out of a service, your reserve fleet is not something that you're going to have to worry about breaking down or not going to be working. So we have two engines coming that we had planned for fiscal year 2020 and 21. The reason we have two of them coming at the same time, what we call our twins, coming at the same time, is we plan that for late 2020, early 2021, for the purposes of getting a better deal. When you buy two of them, you get a price break, if you will, for buying in bulk. We did get a price break, pretty decent price break on it, by buying two of them together. Those are due here in probably first till mid-September. Those will be replacing the engine at station number two and station number three. Those are our oldest two engines in frontline right now, but we are going to be working with the manufacturers to make sure that we maintain some good prices moving forward, and we do plan for that, those replacements, years and years in advance.
Thank you.
You bet.
Got time for one more question. Shandra.
Hi, good evening, Chief. You mentioned the facility's master plan, has that been published yet, or is that still in process?
Yeah, so we have gone through the process, and it is, the plan is put together, and I believe, Mayor, that probably is going to be something that the new council members have access to very shortly.
Yeah, it's available.
So that is in place. What they did was they tried to prioritize each building within the city and find out which were the ones that were needing attention the quickest.
And where can I find that plan? Is it on the website?
It's through the Public Works website, we can send you a link to.
Thank you.
Important to know that over the past three years, not only did we do the programming needs assessment, the space needs assessment, as part of the overall facility's master plan, so that's one document. as part of the overall facility's master plan, so that's one document. We also did the stormwater master plan and the pavement condition assessment. So we're pretty well poised to make really good, informed decisions about our infrastructure needs and our priorities for those. So coming out of that master plan for facilities was the need for the two fire substations as well as a storage, indoor storage facility at Public Works to keep, to put our very expensive equipment indoors. Right now, most of it's sitting outside, which is terrible. So we are looking at a storage facility, which would also have space for climate-controlled document storage. Because the other thing the facility's plan identified was that about 18% or 19% of the space in City Hall was devoted to storing paper instead of being available for use by people and serving the public. So you'll find that facility's plan fascinating if you like that sort of thing. We'll send you the link. And that's going to be one of our guiding documents over the next few years. And you'll also hear a lot about something called the VERF, which is the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. And that's where departments set aside funds each year to purchase these very expensive pieces of equipment. So, you know, it's a planned replacement fund, and the VERF plays a very important role in maintaining and, you know, making sure we have the equipment and the vehicles that the city needs when they need them.
Appreciate the time, and I really do. Thanks for your patience. Getting my PowerPoint up before the presentation.
We've all had that Zoom experience. Well, thank you, Chief.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, we'll move on to public input. Let me switch to the list. Charles Davidson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Charles Davidson. I'm a mentor and a community navigator for First Followers. And by going out in the community, talking to people, I think that it would be a good idea to put more money toward programs that connect with our youth. More mentoring programs, mental health resources, after-school programs. This helps preventing the violence that's going on in Champaign County. Family environment that will support healthy development. You need to build programs that teach parenting skills also. Also is needed is a class to show people how to interact with police when they get bored over. You wouldn't believe how many people don't know what's expected of them when they see their light flashing, and they stop, they just don't know. I think that'll solve a lot of problems. And once the people in our community see that the city really cares about them, I think we'll get a lot more support from our communities, you know, like a community watch and stuff like that. Instead of just going to different communities and seeing what signs, there actually will be people there in their community watching out for trouble or whatever. And as always, the people that's closer to the problem is closer to the solution. And I thank you for supporting First Followers. I pray you continue to support First Followers. Thank you.
Thank you. Angel Johnson. Go ahead, Angel. Go ahead, Angel. Can you hear us? Sounds like Angel's having a little audio. Are you there?
Now can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. 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 So, good evening, everyone, again. Okay. So I was calling tonight. Like I said, I had my hand up last week, but I got missed some kind of way. I don't know how that happened. But I'm here tonight. And like the gentleman before said, that there's a big concern in our community about our youth. I am a youth pastor, and I also own Angel's Youth Center here. For many years, we have a daycare, and we have a youth center in our home. And we do lots of activities.
Angel, we've lost you. We're not hearing you, Angel. You could try calling in, Angel, or finishing your comments by email. We'd be happy to take them either way. I think at this point, we'll move on to Tracy Chong, and if we can get Angel back after Tracy, we'll try.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'll keep it short tonight. I would like to ask council members, especially the new council members, to tune in to the CPRB meeting this coming Wednesday at 5:30 PM, where there will be a TASER review. I have been bringing up the tasering incident from 2019, which appears to be in violation of UPD's TASER policy. But so far, none of the current city council members have shown any concern about the excessive use of violence by Urbana Police Department. None of you guys have been concerned by the attempt of Deputy Chief Souls to suppress video footage and the lies told by Deputy Chief Souls during the civilian police review process. So I really hope that the new cohort of council members, they do not let UPD leadership get away with lies, and that it is crystal clear that lies and efforts to obscure transparency by UPD are not tolerated in this new government. I don't know why it's so hard for the current batch of council members to recognize lies and to just do something about it, make sure that it does not happen again. You guys just choose to ignore the problem up to today. Yeah, so I hope you guys, the old council members, even though you'll no more be council members, just tune in and just see what you guys have been missing. And I don't know, I don't know how you feel about it. Also, I thought it was interesting that Chief Seraphin brought up how UPD plays a role in the new comprehensive plan during his presentation. Mayor Marlin has been so proud about announcing how the city wants to hear everything, including residents' concerns and issues that the city should improve upon via the Imagine Urbana website. But actually, Mayor Marlin and Chief Seraphin, again, being this ingenious, when I tried to mention the Aliyah Lewis incident and the public's concern about policing issues over the past year via the Imagine Urbana website, well, guess what? My post was censored within a few minutes. So, hey, you've been calling for concerns on their website. Public puts it on, and you censor it. So I don't know. I guess that's how the city is. Thank you.
We'll try Angel Johnson one more time. Angel, can you unmute yourself? Are you there? I think we'll move on. Angel, please send your comments via email to the City Council, and everyone will receive it. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to council input communications. Any council member want to make comments or respond to what they've heard? No? Okay. I will let the public know a couple of things related to youth programming, especially in response to the recent violence. Representative Ammons has been in contact with both myself and Mayor Finan and is very interested in trying to obtain some funds through the Illinois Criminal Justice Authority for summer youth programming. So we're looking at ways to do that, including increasing or expanding the Self-Made Kings program, which operates specifically here in Urbana with middle school and early high school-age kids. We just heard from the Ministerial Alliance. We'll be meeting with them, hopefully, in the next week to talk about specific steps they would like to recommend to helping address the violence. We're working with the Community Coalition. And of course, the Urbana Police are working very, very hard to identify the recent people involved in the violence. And again, public collaboration and cooperation is important in that. And I will be looking at other options, including First Followers. Okay, we'll move on to, we have no additions to the agenda. We have no unfinished business. We have one item coming out of the committee, and that'd be Eric Sacks.
So on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move to approve Resolution Number 2021-04-019R, a resolution approving the City of Urbana and Champaign-Urbana-Champaign County Home Consortium, FY 2021, 2022 Annual Action Plan.
I'll second that.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports of special committees. Anyone have anything to report? Okay. Reports of officers. Just an announcement, there will be a COVID vaccine clinic this Wednesday at Salt and Light on Philo Road. It's being sponsored or held by Carl, the Carl Mobile Clinic. It's open from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It's a walk-in clinic, so people don't need to make an appointment in advance. This is a very good location to reach people who live in East Urbana, who may have had trouble getting transportation out to some of the other vaccination clinics that were held in Champaign. So again, this is Wednesday, April 28th, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, walk-in clinic at Salt and Light. And we're really grateful that Carl is setting up this clinic and will be firing and trying to get the word out in the neighborhood itself. So please, please spread the word. Dennis?
Yeah, I'm sorry that when you mentioned that whether there was like special announcements, I forgot to mention that I've just been contacted today to announce and share with the public that there is going to be a downtown Urbana May Day Art Walkabout. That's May 1st. It'll start at 10:00 in the morning and go to 5:00 in the afternoon. It's being sponsored by the local businesses downtown. It'll feature artworks exhibited at local sites, including Bohemia, the Cinema Gallery, the Gilbert Gallery on Main Street, the International Galleries in Lincoln Square, the Urbana Museum of Photography on Ray Street, and the Tom Brewer Gallery. And I think that it would be great for people to enjoy coming out, and probably it's going to be a pleasant afternoon, and do a walkabout in downtown Urbana. Thank you.
And that just reminded me, I have one other announcement, which is more or less a teaser, but on Arbor Day, the city's going to have a very exciting announcement to share with the community. So stay tuned. Last item on the agenda is under New Business, and I have two appointments to bring to you for your consideration. The first is an appointment to the UC2B Board of Directors for a term ending June 30th, 2023. And the second is to Tree Commission for the term ending June 30th, 2023. For those of you who don't know, the UC2B Board of Directors is a board that was created around the same time the UC2B broadband network was installed in the city. The board has a number of responsibilities. One is they help foster the deployment of affordable broadband connectivity throughout Champaign-Urbana. They also work closely with the broadband partner I-3 on some operational issues and deployment issues, and advise, work with them to identify the areas that need service and that sort of thing. And then they also operate and are responsible for the dispersment of funds from the Community Benefit Fund. So a portion of the revenue from I-3 goes into this fund, and then it's utilized to fund special projects to address the broadband needs of the underserved members of the community. So I'm recommending for approval for this position Connie Dillard Myers. She's a 16-year resident of Urbana. She works in support of the University of Illinois in Champaign, in the engineering and accounting staff. She has 30 years of experience with the U of I library, and her background includes computer information systems, systems administration and security, training and development, work performance improvement. She also is a former member of the UC2B Technical Committee, so when this whole network first began, and strongly is committed to the fact that everyone should have access to affordable internet. And she's very eager to work with the UC2B Board to realize full digital access for all residents. And then for the Urbana Tree Commission, I'm recommending Alex Julius. Alex is a seven-year resident of Urbana and is the Employee Development and Safety Training Specialist for the Davy Tree Company. She has a Master of Science in Environmental Conservation with a concentration in arboretum culture and urban forest tree from the University of Massachusetts. She's bringing her background as the Associate Director of Educational Goods and Services with the International Society of Arboretum Culture. That's a hard one to say. Arboretum culture. Her technical expertise and her interest in the preservation of mature and healthy legacy trees to the Tree Commission. So we're very excited about her joining the Tree Commission. So I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion then, Mayor.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And we have no further business for the Urbana City Council. So I guess this is the last full City Council meeting for five of our Senate members. We'll celebrate your service next week, but thank you for your service. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Night.